So.
I'd like to open the SWAT board meeting for the town of Allentown for Monday, May 19 at 6:00 P. M. And much rain is supposed to. I believe it. Because I believe it. Uh, we'll start with citizen comments. If anybody has any, we have to come to the table and announce your name.
Yeah, hi, uh, Tumpsy Silver now, resident. Uh, just quick question, I guess for you, John. Um. Is there any plans of fixing the A. E. S. flagpole, the flag?
I believe it has been repaired. It just doesn't have a flag right now.
Okay, because I knew it was down for like two years out of this.
Right, I believe the, uh, the pulley up at the top was broken. It's been repaired.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silver.
Thank you.
Anybody here?
Press auditions are on the road.
Oh, sorry about that. Hold on. Present in the board is Kathleen Hellisir, Darian Adenoco, law member. Trish Caruso.
Joan Harrington.
Brian Asnold, building inspector.
Eric Lambert, fire chief.
Veronica Anaya, finance clerk.
Peter DeSantis, president.
Mike Presnel, A. D. C. head.
Paris Town reporter.
Armin Verdo.
Chad Villasvia, road agent.
Thank you for that reminder. Okay, any other citizen comments?
Uh, you missed a great concert Saturday. We had touchy weather, but it turned out good. Um, yeah. The band arrived early to set up their equipment. And the only, the only negative thing I can say is we had things too far apart. We realized how big the building was.
Yeah.
But we had the band inside the gym because the store agents put down the padding on the floor. So people were able to use that safely. They had pulled the bleachers back too, so that makes it easy seating. And the surprise was the band brought some of their friends who were teaching people how to do line dancing.
Uh, oh, cool.
That must have been.
So they lined that way. And, uh, plus the, the usual stragglers, you know, coming between two and three o'clock. Um, and we had outside, we had PTO outside the cafeteria doing a food section. Because the, uh, people were sore, you know, they didn't want to sit in the cafeteria while walking through the halls. So people had to go outside the building around the, the patio.
Yeah.
On the other side of the building, we had nice little kids taking care of the kids that were, young kids that wanted to play basketball, playground. We also had the, uh, a booth set up for face painting and time dining. Both operated by PTO people. And it did some exquisite painting from, you know, what we call amateurry. There's a lot of kids, even, uh, even some adults that their faces painted. And PD and the fire departments came and, uh, really excited that people, uh, they, they had two cruisers and they let the kids climb into them and run the lights and the horn and the sirens and that. They were all getting excited over that. I took a picture of one kid. He was smart enough to take the little way out of his mouth before I threw his picture.
Yeah.
Uh, the fire department came with an end, an endless one and power one. It would give the kids rides and fuck it.
Oh, wow.
I didn't realize that they swung the ladder around to the rear, but actually almost touched the ground. So you could easily get in and out. So, uh, we got a great, a great time. We got officially set in raffle and I've got to find out where that honey my belt probably went to our, our best roll count. And so then playing until five and then we left and let the consomians clean out the place. So I'm expecting a final bill from them. Because being another kingdom, they charge our kingdom services. So away from them, but used for the time the consomians said, setting up these questions in the back. So as a matter of fact, we're in the back. Everybody's laughing.
Good.
So my next, is anybody else? Our next, our next one on June 22nd will have banned every pet in years past out of Bay. Which is a pop rock group. And their name comes from a leader whose family is in law enforcement. They're, they're iconic as a pair of handcuffs. So it's never been made. So as a matter of thing, we're doing well.
Okay, that explains it well. Thank you. Just so we know, we're in citizen comments. If anybody else would like to have a chance to make comments now at the time. Uh, thank you. All right, our regular agenda items. The first item is the 2025 tax warrant. Uh, we have the, uh, warrant that's prepared for our tax collector. Um, for us to approve it and decide to and have her send out the tax notifications. All right, um, so let's see. Dates in the name of the state. Uh, you are hereby directed to collect the property taxes and molestation with committed to you amount to the sum of $6,665,263 and with interest at 8% per annum from July 1st, 2025 thereafter on all sum not paid on or before that date. We further order you to remit all monies collected to the town treasurer to the town treasures designated as provided by RSA 41296. At least on a weekly basis or daily whenever tax receipts total $1,500 a month. I'll make a motion that we, uh, the tax, the tax collector proceed with the tax warrants. One second. On paper. Kathleen, nine. Trisha. Laura. Trisha, I'm still used to the old order of things. So I'll send this around for signing. Okay, next we have Chief Lambert here for this fire department.
Yeah, everything is right here. Um, so more of a couple of things. Uh, we know it's the appeal plan, which is a net, it's the first year's one. Um, the line revolving fund, um. Second is the firefighters association. We have an iPad on the end, iPads need to be replaced. Um, so the firefighters association, uh, has offered and purchased an iPad to donate to the town. They just need to be, um, okay, yeah. Except the iPad. Yeah, it was $500,000 just to accept the donation of the iPad, uh, for the in-laws, so.
Who donated it?
Yeah, on some fire fighters association purchased it, purchased it. Just looking to have that accepted and then just a couple of things after this.
So what would be the amount?
About $500,000.
We get attention to the, the town to accept the donation of $599 on the fire department. So the fire fighters association.
I'm getting it.
One second. All on paper. Kathleen, nine. Darian. Laura. Trisha.
Thank you. Um, and just a quick update, um. Also, the association is getting preparing to go to, um, their donation for the training pounds, uh, exposed something on the train is gonna be here on Saturday to set the buses. Um, so they will be handling, assume that expense, uh, as their formation, which is going to be probably to work, so. Um, they're gonna look at that. The other thing is, um, the in-laws has gone back down to the manufacturer for some, um, updates and some, um, items that need to be repaired on their end for warranty stuff. And the engine three, which I informed John on Monday is also was picked up this one in Red Green Run because it had significant electrical issue where the truck would shut off while driving and then the backup line would come on while it was driving. So it's an electrical issue that we narrowed down, but we can't narrow it fix. So it's gone down to Red Green Run to be repaired because it's, it's a safety issue in my mind to be, um, so. Besides that, um, a couple of wires are okay, but some of our, three out of our 16 wires I went through have, uh, dropped off the base of the earth. So, um, hopefully take on that. If not, we'll be moving forward with some changes, so. Roof update? Uh, roof update. So good. Thank you for reminding me of that because I was waiting. I actually just talked to him today. So we had the building evaluated by the solar company. Um, it is a coming year, um, warranty on anything that is caused solar plant causes damage on, which the building has not. It's not the solar panels that are causing the damage. It almost looks like a woodpecker down there. I mean, if you look at the station on the left side, there's a bunch of holes in the actual shingles. So, so, uh, solar garden came out and, you know, the primax adjuster, they both looked at the same thing. Um, I'll wait in your response from solar garden about their findings because primax won't move forward until they see that of solar garden. Once they bring that forward, we've gotten one quarter ready, which was, um, I think it was a whole project with the $16,000 to redo the roof. Um, and we're waiting on two others to see if that's true, what they have to do when primax gets done their stuff. So they did flash underneath it to stop the leaking for now, but, uh, there's a couple of sheets of plywood that are very soft and can walk on. So as soon as I know that, we'll know more where we can go through this. But most likely they're gonna be a primus, so.
So will this be covered by primax?
Uh, uh, but it sounds of the gentleman that was there speaking, um, they're kind of a little bit, um, they're thoughtful on how, so what they should explain to you about the solar garden people is what will happen is woodpeckers, uh, Mr. Vanegas in the backyard had a huge tree that he cut down last year that was full of, um, carpenter ants, bugs. So that's what woodpeckers like to eat.
Yep.
So their nesting was there. So if they were flying around, if there's any moss on the roof or not, they think that that's the same thing. So they'll try to go in through, try to find either carpenter ants or grubs or anything like that that's on moss. So he, he's got some pictures. There's a row of six holes literally up and down. You can see six holes and throw up the roof. Those things are, there's holes like that they just poke through.
Uh.
So, um, they're just trying to determine, you know, what that was so they can move forward with everything else. So just gotta wait and see what's gonna happen.
This typically is thousand dollar deductible, but they'll cover the rest.
Yeah. That's it.
Can you, can you, well, let's give a round for us to finish this purchase order, the ambulance?
Do you want me to just sort of, no, you guys in the end last night, or just?
Yeah.
Run it to afterwards, yes, okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna text and Chief Stark will zoom in. He's, he's there. Okay. Here he is.
Hi, Chief, you're, Chief Stark, you're, you're next on our agenda. Welcome.
Uh, so I sent everyone, uh, memo explaining, uh, the issue we're running into with my, uh, retirement. It leaves us with a, an open position and with the next academy being September, uh, just with how long the process is, we really should, um, I wanted to come to the board and, and ask if we could advertise for that and try filling it because with 24 hours to cover, uh, overtime starts to rack up, um, with, uh, positions unfilled.
Uh, was, were those positions included in your, uh, budget presentation from the, uh, meeting of the deficit?
Yes. Yeah, I included filling them.
That wouldn't add anything to that.
Correct. It, it's budget four completely covered.
Trish, about any other questions? So I'll make a motion that we allow Chief Stark, the police department, to fill, uh, the vacancy that will be created due to his retirement. One second. On paper, Kathleen, nine. Darian, eight. Laura. Trisha.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it, everybody.
Sure. Thank you. Any other things, Mike?
No, I'm all set. Uh, it's, uh, go, it's been busier than I would have liked. Uh, so, uh, Beth and I have not had as much time as we would have liked, but I'm not going far. So, um, we're, we're still, uh, whittling away at the list of things we want to talk about. Um, but other, other than that, we're doing okay. Uh, you know, the paperwork's, uh, seems to always be there. Um, I'm not getting to the bottom of the pile, so, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll do that and I'll be able to hand off, I want to hand off the smallest amount of administrative issues as possible.
Would you, um, tell us, you recently went to a conference and I'm, I'm curious as to why Beth Stark, uh, didn't go to that conference where you're retiring and she be.
Which, which, which conference?
Uh. Which one was it? Which one was it? I don't know.
I know, I started checking.
Yeah, yeah. It was on our list. Sorry, the, the one you just came back from, I think. Um, sorry, I don't have the.
The, the negotiators conference.
Did you hear a memo? Oh, I think so.
The negotiators conference down the Cape?
Yeah, I think it was the one you traveled to and so maybe.
It's, she's not a negotiator. Uh, it's something that I've taken part in for almost, almost 15 years, uh, and I'm the, uh, A. V. person for the, the group. So she, she's not a part of that group at all. So it's just not something that has, uh, much to do with, uh, uh, the administrative job of being police. It has more to do with, uh, negotiations.
Was that something you could have backed out of where you're retiring? Or was it?
Uh, no, I was, my retirement and whether I was needed or not is, wasn't something I could back out of in time because I'm needed as part of that. So I just, uh, had to go to that.
Thanks. I appreciate it. Um, next on the agenda is our town page updated. We were given some options to look at, whether we like any, any landmark more relevant records. What we did for our these dollars, price auction, I mean, or not, we give a price option. So we say what, what we want.
For me, personally, look me through them. I'm stuck in between three and four. I like the icons on a lot. I think they're, they're easy to find. Um, and the information that goes with it. And I guess just to start with the, the standard starter that we were starting low and if we need to build up more, then maybe that's a great idea. That's my, yeah.
Yeah, I like threes of that.
Yeah.
Initially, I liked four, but then I looked at two a little bit more and I thought, okay, some of that stands up. I like how three is definitely, like you said, everything is easy to see.
I can.
Yeah.
I'd say four if it would have.
Yeah, and more, yeah.
I agree.
Three?
Yeah.
Three, all the way around. Do you like three as well, John? It's true. What do yours have?
Three is.
Okay.
Three's for me.
Question.
Yeah, you're the one who's trying to be, and then all again the follow ups.
Yeah. And I agree, Laura, with starting out with that standard package because we can expand if we need to.
Yeah.
To start with, the basics for sure. So John's gonna get, tell them that would be our preference and now we'll get pricing in that, then we'll decide finally.
So I expect that then tomorrow.
Thank you. I'm so excited. It's time to get up.
Question, please.
Yeah.
Mike Presnel. Do these, uh, any of these new designs reduce the number of clicks they get from?
Significantly.
Hopefully it will, yes.
Does it reduce what I call progressive disclosure? That's constantly clicking and you get more and more and more finding the document that you're looking for.
Yeah, no, there are, we're hoping today to do that, yes, to make things quickly be easy to find and access and you won't have to sift through multiple years of data that you weren't even, you know, ideally. And it's correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I think John would express that to Simmons Plus when you asked me the, the, the options.
It doesn't have a better web, web design inter, interface than what we've got now.
It appears to. So we're just gonna have a study, a committee that will, you know, work with that option and see if it does work the way we want it. Next on our agenda is A. E. S. Study Committee, as we mentioned. And I know that Diane put together this lovely, um, document to kind of guide that process. So Diane, you want to speak on that?
Yeah. So, uh, what it is, is it's an overall procedure as to how the ad hoc committee is gonna work. Uh, the different positions coincide with the list that you gave, I don't know, two or three meetings ago. Um, and it basically says, you know, here, here are the different, uh, can be people from committees. There's a person from either around there for, uh, um, a citizen and that document defines responsibilities and what we want those people to do and, uh, you know, how long, how long we've got. I'm looking at 45 days. Um, to get the analysis done and, uh, report back to the board of selectmen. Um, you know, they can set up their meetings. It's like a 14, so they don't have to have like everybody for every meeting because that's never gonna happen.
Yeah, that's too many.
Uh, so I've got, one of the attachments is all of the people who are participating, all of their email address so people can communicate. Uh, and basically, you know, their, their, uh, their task is to do with analysis. I've got a bunch of attachments there that are all somehow related to info, background information regarding A. E. S. Um, and they can look at that and do whatever analyses. And then basically what I envisioned is after they've met and they've got their analysis done, as they present it to this board and then we, you know, make a decision.
The slot that was included, was that previously done or was that something?
That's, that's the one that Kathleen provided. It's just background information that they may or may not find useful. But I just wanted as much information as they could possibly use for resources.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was more of a purchasing, but I think the, like the pros and cons listed there are something that they didn't work with.
Yeah, um, I wonder if we want to include in this, uh, the idea of moving P. D. over there and selling their properties.
Have done explore that? Yes. Possibility.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm. I'd say probably forty. Up to. I think 45 days is gonna be tight as it is.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it's gonna be tight. I only anticipated that it would be done in 45 days.
I don't either, but, um, can we always extend it?
Yeah, well, it's maybe they won't. Well, I mean, again, um, you don't want to throw the scope like so big so they never get it done.
I, I agree, I agree.
I mean, managing the projects I manage, if you give somebody 100 days, they're gonna take 100 days. If you give somebody 60 days, they may not get it done in 60 days, but they may get it done in 65 days, right?
I appreciate this. We just have to put, you know, wrap some sort of a timeframe around it.
And I think, again, it's, it's getting estimates and doing analyses, you know, with information that already exists. So.
Yeah, my thing about the P. D. moving over there and selling the P. D.'s property that we currently have, that's a prime piece of real estate that would get, you know, swap, taken up a lot faster than this building certainly, well.
But I think.
Faster than that building.
But I, I think we should keep the scope to what it is here. And then if the decision is made to acquire it, then I think phase two was probably, hey, let's do another study and analysis to get the P. D. moved over because that's gonna have pretty high costs.
I know.
I think so. I think so too, but I'm not opposed to looking at it.
Right.
It's good to know. I know many members of the public have also thought it up. So one way or the other, it's good to say we didn't look at it. We determined that it would cost way too much or maybe to our surprise, we find out it's feasible.
Right, yeah, I agree with them, yeah.
So I think if we, if we take that approach, then, you know, I mean, the nice part about having the P. D. like right on the main drag looking town, sorry. I blocked around there. Now, having the P. D. there, I think he gives a good visibility, like, hey, the police department is right on the main drag. I think that's, that's kind of a benefit.
Yeah, you're saying.
But, yeah, I don't believe this thing value to sequel. Yeah, and I will say, I know that they are quite often at the gas station, so it's kind of, I didn't, that's like seems to be the hot spot in town, so.
Yeah, yeah.
She got right there. So we are raising all the stores and that, um, because, I mean, because if we help for some reason acquire, you know, take the, the Alstoun School in Gilbert Town Hall, there's no sense in even talking about them.
Right.
So we should do that probably as a phase two at one end.
Yeah, I agree.
But I think we should at least get going and see where we land in 45 days. We may have, you know, 80% of what we're looking for or 50%, but, um. So if we can kick that off, that would be good. I'll deal with you, John. I want to get a meeting. What I'd like to do is meet with the people that are going to be participating and go over that procedure with them and explain the, uh, the attachments and then just make sure everybody knows what they're doing so they can, they can work efficiently and, and, uh, give a shot.
So you'll, you'll, you'd be willing to do that, P. U. thing?
Yeah, I could do that. And I think most of the people can meet during the day, which would be kind of nice. So just, I mean, the key of public meeting, you post it.
Yeah.
And meet here. You know, I can shoot out an email. Uh, because attachment eight there is, is everybody. Uh, because attachment eight there is, is everybody listening, yeah. Attachments, you can shoot it out, and to make sure everybody's clear, here's what you're doing, you know. Go forth and gather data and analyze it and get back to us. So I think that's good.
So I'll make a motion that we uh establish an ad hoc advisory committee for the study of the conversion to town hall or sale of the Allenstown Elementary School. Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Kathy nine?
Diane nine?
Laura?
Trish nine?
So you two will be right on the back page, sure.
Uh, Mr. Traders report.
Based on the new highway building, we have an anticipated start survey of North Point Engineering sometime in June. They'll be coming by to do that. Uh, there's a proposal from Arment that our BOs meeting on June sixteenth, uh, would be held at the old Allenstown Meeting House. If the board is in agreement with that.
I love it, it was quite close to me there, yeah.
So it'll be posted uh at one fifty Deerfield Road, six P M. Are you all set for wifi over there? Zooming in?
We have done it there before, Laura, was it me?
I know, off the phone, oh, yeah. Okay. Um I'll ask the board to look over the transfer station, get the schedule that you all have in your packets, uh, when you get to that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That is something Chad and I worked on, we gave the final review, and that would become effective upon your approval. It's separated into two sections, the top portion being those that the transfer station accepts with a fee, the bottom portion are those items that we still accept, that there was no charge for.
And what happens with these, how are they processed, again, I'm guessing they go somewhere else at some point, right?
What's that?
Like the copper or the weight, well, I know.
Yeah, that's most, not even some of the stuff that we, we do that gets that, that generates a revenue goes through N R R A.
Right.
Um, very seldom can we, can we market it outside of them and, and make money. Um, or make more money. So, the, the steel, the um, you know, the copper, the aluminum, anything like that that we collect goes through N R R A, and then N R R A obviously sends a counter check. Um, that's all the ball, uh, dumped into that. Is it a revolving fund or a category reserve, or?
We've gone.
Yeah. So, that all gets in there, um, the few things that were left out of that, that fee schedule are any furniture and tires, I believe, are the ones that we, we talked about, um. And it's just because of the fees going into the general fund or that they collect at town hall, we're just not sure that there'll be the money in the budget will be there um, for those, for those items. Um, it, it's I, I just don't know what the traffic's gonna be at this point, so. Um, and in our fees, if we, we looked at it, if our fees, we would have to be, we would basically have to match conquered with most of those fees. Um, in order to dispose of them, and there, there's a reason why those fees are there, and why they're charging that much, so. Um the, we had a couple other options, Permore, um, did a did put it out that they would be willing to do, um, uh, like an on-call pickup for anything door side of, for uh, for people that needed um, pickup for a fee as well, so. If we down that road, if that's the way we, we go, then we, uh, you know, they can always, they can only contact them as well. So. Um, the problem with the, with the furniture is the, the cost of the dumpster if you could sell it. Um, Permore did offer a pretty good deal that was close to what Concella old contract it was, but again, it's just becomes, we're penny pinching at this point with the budget, so. That's, that's kind of what we suggested, but I guess it's up to you in the long run.
So, Concella increased their fees to keep those items?
So our dumpster was, there was no hall charge for the, the furniture dumpster, and they charged us a hundred and two dollars a ton. Um, their last proposal was a hundred and sixty dollars a ton, uh, like a hundred and eighty dollar haul fee, and a, like a three hundred dollar rental fee per month for the dumpster.
So we were getting a deal.
We were getting that, we were getting that, yeah.
Okay.
They were taking care of us on the furniture, and they were doing it more because they didn't want it in our dumpsters. Because I mean, we were, we would always put matches and furniture in the regular trash dumpsters, um, but it was very hard for them to get out. So they were, they were, their guys were struggling to get matches out, so they, they were the ones that actually offered it to us. Um, so that they could service it easier, because then it went into the open talk role, and it's just easy to dump. So, um so they did not, the best deal, and we shopped it, we shopped it to um, just about everybody you could think of, um, around, the best deal that we got for this, a similar service was through Permore. Um, they offered it to us at a hundred and fifty dollars a ton to get rid of, and a fifty dollar a month rental. But what they were gonna do is put a dump trailer down, and then we just tow it out once a week, and have to integrate back. So that was the closest we could get to it, but still, just not knowing the, the pure, the volume of what we're gonna get, I don't know. And it was something that, it was so cheap before, we never really watched. Um you know, it was a ton and a half, two ton a week. It's kind of, it's basically what we did.
Now, I would already potentially too, where people don't have trash, they maybe try to sneak up with this in there.
Right.
So, yeah.
Other than furniture, yeah. Yeah.
Did, was there a burn item at the transfer station at one point for like wooden furniture and stuff like that?
No, yeah, so I don't know, probably ten or twelve years ago, maybe even longer than that, because everything's ten years ago. So.
That's the truth, and it's his time, huh?
Uh, so, so years ago, they, they allowed it, um, then they said only they didn't allow you to burn any, any wooden furniture or anything that was treated, it was only non-treated wood, and now they don't even allow you to burn uh, just a plane on two by four. It has to, the only thing you can burn is brush. Um, so it's the only people that might be able to burn it is the fire department, and they burn. Thing.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
I've had a few people ask me about the touchline.
Yeah, no, it's, they, and what they do is, DES is very good about when we burn, they come and test. So they pull, they pull samples of ash and they test it, and if there's anything in it, then
Yeah.
we get rid of that. So we, we really tried to keep it clean, and that was a tough learning start to get the old ways. Throwing everything in that pile at all point.
I also had a few people ask me about the exchange table. Or is that, is that gonna stay in place?
I, I think it can stay in place, we talked about that a little bit, um in the department, and I think it, it can stay as place as long as people it, it just will have to be monitored.
Right.
You know, you can't bring in.
People take things often enough that you wouldn't worry about it just being a place for things to be dumped, and it's monitoring for that.
Right.
But, yeah, people may be inclined to bring things that they normally would throw in the trash.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, right.
Right. So I think it's, it's gotta be very closely monitored, and I think.
Allison's always done a good job of that during that, you know, brought down to it
Yes. Yeah.
Turn right over and look and saw what I just put in the air.
She'll know who, or what will, what will stay and, or what will, will go away, and I mean, if you put anything, I, I, if you put anything there on, on Saturday morning, this gone by Saturday afternoon, somebody's found the use for something.
Yeah. Right.
Um, it's usually, it's usually pretty well, and people in the past have done a good job with it.
And if there were any issues, we could always discontinue it.
Just continue it.
Yeah.
If it becomes history, yeah.
Yeah, it evolves into something you're not anticipating right now.
No, but, I mean, even in the past, people have tried to, oh, this TV works, well, it's a twenty-seven inch tube TV. I don't care if it works or not, nobody's gonna, no, take it home, so you gotta pay for it and put it in the TV, you know. So, stuff like that, and in, um, air conditioners, every once in a while, well, somebody will try to drop that off, or might wait, oh yeah, it works fine, no, you don't get rid of stuff that works typically like that, you know, I mean, on occasion, but usually it's.
On its last line.
Yeah, 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 the air conditioner's got knobs, three of them are missing, and you know, I mean, it's just you plug it in and it rattles, but it, it still throws out cold air sometimes.
Yeah, when you pick it.
Yes.
Mister DeSantis, I'll get you in a moment, I just wanna get the board there, actually, we need to ask any other questions. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Peter DeSantis, um, I just was wondering if there was any accommodations made for like roadside litter pickup, because I usually do that a couple times a year, and I did quite a few bags, I know that, and I didn't know if there was any, anything regarding that in the future.
Sure, so we do have, I mean, the highway department will have a, we have a small dumpster there that we'll use in the house, and, and we, we.
It's pretty easy to tell when you're.
We sized it, yeah, and we, we sized it for those, uh, I mean, for those things that we might find here and there, and you know, and we still gotta take care of parks and, and stuff like that, so. I don't think it'll be a problem, and this past weekend, we had a crew do roadside pickup in, in one of the collectors that are providing private collection in town, actually came to pick them up.
East Coast.
I had, yeah, east coast, then Permore actually called me in the morning and said, do you want us to pick them up, and I was like we'll take care of them one day, and then east coast just did it, so. So I think we've got some good private contractors in town that are really willing to help us. Uh, so.
Good. Do you need to make a motion to?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the transfer station needs schedule effective May thirteen, or the name, it's, what's the date, nine, twenty twenty five. Second. And all in favor?
Kathy nine?
Diane nine?
Laura?
Trish nine?
And one last thing, you probably all noticed that the twenty twenty-two audit was complete. And it was in your packet, and it's also up on the town website in the finance department.
So there were a couple issues as I was reading through it, do you have plans in place to resolve those, I'm assuming you do, and twenty-two was a
Yeah.
crapshoot of a year.
Yes, and there were four items, I'm gonna do the response.
Yeah, and it didn't seem like anything major, so that was
Right.
Believing to see, but I just wanted to make sure that we are addressing.
Yes, I'll, I'll be responding to those, and I'll give you a copy of ours.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Well.
I, I know in the past, they'd come and given a invitation to the board, can we be able to, that's necessary, if I'm wrong, it was noon.
I, I know, and it's issue, just because there was only those four minimal
Right.
in two, see what, I'm wondering, it's about twenty, twenty-three. Me too, so depending on what comes back, I would say, I mean, if there was something that really needed our attention, or that we weren't able to under wrap our heads around, it would make sense, but otherwise, I don't see, you know, making them give up more of their time potentially, higher cost rate.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Any other business, Kathy, do you have anything else that you wanna could share with us?
Lot of mowing, um, no, the, uh, so basically, so far, the school's added almost a day of mowing to our weekly schedule. Um so, with the mower we have, we might, we might have to entertain looking at another, another mower, just because
Well, make sure you contribute that, that to the study committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's just they, it's, it's a project.
What can you anticipate?
Well, no, it's just, it's a lot of grass to mow with one, with one
Yeah, it's a big field?
It, it's a big field. So, I mean, we could, we could if that's something, the road we go in that hands up our building, we should definitely make about a, a second mower, just to get it done, and I mean, talk to Arment, he volunteered Cladett in the meantime. I haven't talked to Cladett yet, but, well we'll see, he, he says she's very good on a lawn mower. But other than that.
I'm just gonna start attending meetings, you know, keep stuff.
We're looking, hopefully next week, we, we have to do the, uh, the curb on the tender, if anybody's tender every time it freezes, washes out pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we'll have to address the curb on that, this, probably, hopefully this week coming.
Past Deerfield Road, do you, you guys were swimming and washed out the stairs.
So far, so good.
I drive every day.
You guys are good.
For me.
It's, it, though, what we did last year to fix you know, or it's holding up, um, it take, takes a little bit more maintenance. I mean, every time we have a big rainstorm, I send the guys up before, if it's, if it's in, and we blow out, we make sure, and people have a tendency not to clean their their culverts, which they're required by law, but if they don't clean them, we lose our rope, so it, it's one of those things that we, we spend a little bit of time in, you know, a couple guys in a couple hours, and we make sure the space where it is. So other than that, uh, we'll probably look to start some roadside mowing in next week as well. Everything's starting from now. So we'll clean out those intersections and see if we can compact everything that we, we can see.
Other, other business?
Or if you have.
Oats, right? Yes. Are there oats?
It's all.
Yeah, okay, you're right. No, we're good.
Yes, we do have some documents to, uh, potentially sign.
Yeah, real quick, um, there's no, no restroom at the meeting house.
Go up, go up.
I look around the corner, you can all see.
Put in the case of water.
Thank you. Alright, so, uh, first item is the purchase order for the amb- ambulance lease payment, um we refer to services revolving fund in the amount of seventy-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-two cents. Um, the balance in that fund right now is four hundred and eighty-three thousand, six fifty-three nineteen. This is for the first year ambulance lease payment, decaxed down to the sale. This was discussed previously, so I will be collecting, so make a motion that we, um approve this purchase order.
Second question. Uh, favor?
Kathy nine?
Diane nine?
Laura?
Trish nine?
Any word, Scott, how he's doing?
Sure. Just a couple words, Scott.
Yeah.
Just out of.
Alright, then next item, if you, are you okay with me proceeding, Laura, you want me to wait for you?
Yes, I can do that.
Um, next item is a land use change tax for MAP four oh two, lot one fifty-seven. Um, client has a market value of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and the tax due is thirteen thousand, five hundred and eighty, the motion that we approve this as dated.
I'll second.
Uh, favor?
Kathy nine?
Diane nine?
Laura?
Trish nine?
And I just want to clarify, this is only a recommendation of.
Of the accessory, thank you. Yes, you're, okay, I'll move on. Um, this next item is a notice of appointment to the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission. Uh, appointing Ryan Bowdre and Kathleen Palisir to that commission. And representatives for the county of Allenstown, and make a motion that we, that the.
Second.
All in favor?
Kathy nine?
Diane?
Laura?
Trish nine?
Oh, and I think only you need to sign that.
Only you, yeah, yeah. Anybody's attention?
You get, it's fine.
That's new, you don't have to do that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I remember there were, for years, I thought you were, yeah.
Really? Yeah, I was, but they, we never got any forms like that.
You should have, I know you do. You, you should have, I know you give them the task of the.
Yeah, that was for, uh, Sandy, who used it.
It's a wonderful thing.
Yeah. You know, see, I think you would get that.
Yeah.
Next item, obviously, um, is this submitted by you, Diana? This, um.
Yeah, so. For, for B O S, yeah, so that is a procedure, that's a procedure I wrote, I mean, two years ago. So before we're gonna write procedures, that's a procedure that defines how we're gonna control documents, issue numbers, who has access to it. So we really need to get that one signed off before we get going and do a launch, so basically, um. There's, uh, I've got a template for like policies, procedures, uh, forms. Okay, probably whatever that I can remember, uh, and then a numbering scheme and then access. To approve documents, I've got in there will be the town administrator and the chair of the board. Everybody can get like read onlys, but if somebody like, I'm gonna come and see you and say, hey, I want the next number for a procedure that pertains to board of select. There's a numbering scheme in there for like, for example, I did one a few years ago to the planning board, that looks like that. But as we update these procedures that, you know, haven't been touched in a while. Like for example, the board of selecting rules and procedure. This, I don't know how old it is because it's not even dated, so I made the process of forwarding that over to this form.
I actually. I actually had sent or asked John to forward a copy from the town of Flintwood. That I wanted the board to review and consider, like, you know, tweaking it to the Allenstown, but theirs was very, sterile, very.
Uh huh.
I was very impressed, and I reviewed a lot of them for the board.
Yeah.
And I really thought they hit it out of the.
Yeah, it's in the, yeah. I can, first I'm gonna pull over what we have, then I'll take a look at it, and then we can look at it at this meeting and see.
Yeah, wonder, and this will help us address a lot of issues in the audit too. Here, okay. So, great job, Diane.
Yeah, it looks good, um. I, I guess you need a question I have is. Are we looking at the R O S A's that might govern such a document?
Look, so that, so what I have in the, on the template, there's a section for record and record retention. I've got the R O S A, on the template, I've got instructions. Like in this section, you put this, so in the, in the section, and you'll see that in the one we just signed records. Uh, there's an R O S A that pertains to records and record retention, so the template says, hey, go look here and see what type of. Uh, you know, what type of document it is and how long you have to retain it.
And I'm sure that's covered as your ninety one A.
Uh, and then I. Yeah, 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 and then in the section for like records, documents. That's where we should put like whatever applicable R O S A, so that if they do change, we could search those documents for the R O S A's. And then see if there's any impacts or.
Oh, I like that.
For the documents, yeah, and so.
Is that why we, when the laws change, it's so hard to keep up and find exactly what's up?
Yeah. Yeah. And then we'll have to. Put in place where on our, you know, one or two year basis. We review these, because they just go, stand it and, you know, that's what we.
Yes. Yeah.
We have that, it'll be out that now, so we should. You know, and John, I should see the documents come up, just people list and I'll just muck it away.
Right.
Any other questions from the board on that? So I'm gonna make a motion and I'll read the, I'll review on purpose. And, yeah, let us, I make a motion that we accept the pro B O S zero one development control and maintenance of documentation. Uh, guide, um, regulation needed. Um, the overview is the objective of a defined documentation structure is to serve the town of Allenstown as value added to its functions. Support public boards, department head and employee, and ensure consistency and efficiency of operation. The purpose of this procedure is to define the process for developing documents, including control and maintenance and associated with.
I just wrote, wait. Cause I forgot to do this. John, do you have any concerns with me?
I don't.
Okay, no, I don't mind.
I did review.
Okay, good, all right, please, I'm ready to talk.
I'll second that. Uh, favors?
Kathleen nine.
Diana.
Laura.
Trishan.
All time.
We are still, I mean, it should be a.
Round order.
I'm also, this is nerve wracking. So, when I'm nervous, I tend to get excited and jump ahead, so. Next have, uh. Lot of open office, yes. Fill through, um, got. Two for the health officers, um, positions, Brian Otschel to be, um. Appointed to the health officer position and Veronica Naga to be appointed as deputy health officer, and make a motion that we accept these appointments. I'll second. Uh, favor?
Kathy nine.
Diana.
Laura.
Trishan.
And we have one for the director of emergency management that, uh, Michael Stark will be appointed. As the director of emergency management. The motion that we accept that appointment.
Now, he's keeping that even after retirement?
Yeah, yeah, he said it was.
I'll second that.
Uh, favor?
Kathy nine.
Diana.
Laura.
Trishan.
Got three appointments for the planning board, I make a motion that we accept the appointment. Michael Geranti is a planning board member.
Yeah.
Kathleen Palacir is an ex officio to the planning board. And a nice tone, do we?
Alternate?
Alternate.
You want to, you don't, then.
Okay, yeah, uh, Julie Ousso is alternate ex officio to the planning board.
I will second that.
Uh, favor?
Kathy nine.
Diana.
Laura.
Trishan.
All right, and. One for the zoning board, make a motion that we accept the appointment of Joanna Rushich. As a member of the zoning board. Second?
I'll second that.
Uh, favor?
Kathleen nine.
Diana.
Laura.
Trishan.
Five appointments for the budget.
Budget, yeah. We now have a full budget.
That's awesome. Uh, I made a motion that we accept the following appointments to the budget committee, Mark Valanto. Roger Staley. Victoria Cassidy. Chris Bowler and Lisa Taylor. All home, yeah.
I'll second that.
Uh, favor?
Kathy nine.
Diana.
Laura.
Trishan. So with the next. Meeting for all of these committees. I'll give the, um, yeah, I'll give the olds to Michael Barrett, you can swear, people that are.
Yeah.
Planning board, um. And the next budget committee is June fifth, I think? Pretty so. So I'll grab all these in there.
Thank you, thank you. All right, our next item, um. Is a tax abatement granted for the property located at map one twelve, lot two sixty. And the amount of abatement is four cents. Um, the reason is the mortgage company paid by E F P, it A P H R E. And payment was four cents short, causing current amount of twenty two fifty four due to the loan notice going out. Customer did have delinquency notice from February dating the four cents was the remaining balance. This is, uh.
I'll second that.
Is it coming to the sensors?
No.
Yeah, I'll check. Actually.
Yeah, but it's four cents and it's, I, I don't know what you're going for, so I second that.
The cleaner.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Kathleen.
Diana.
Laura.
Trishan.
Now, when they come, when this turns.
Yeah, I think I mean, those V C H payments just, I mean, it's actually on the dollar and where it's a penny add up.
And when you're importing a payment, a lot of times you're importing payments for maybe.
Long.
Yeah, a hundred properties, you don't, I guess.
So having one be off by four cents is heavy so often, it's not so bad. All right, the next item up is the meeting minutes for May fifth, twenty twenty five. Uh, make a motion that we accept these minutes. I will second that. Uh, favor?
Kathleen nine.
Diana.
Laura. I'm not intended to sentence before, but I did see a spelling error under, uh, Chief Lambert's. Report. In the third line, it says, enter into a contact. And I believe that's should be, uh, tracked. So I'll make a note of that here.
I'm sorry. I'm glad that we're. You, that sounds impressive.
We owe you some. Oh, that we have in our signature folder, um, we kept some. Uh, just because we only, because there's no caller on this one. Um. There was, uh, in John's email to us, it was in a correspondence from the partner revenue, um. Reporting to us. That, uh, our official notification of the twenty twenty four total equiline, equiline valuations. Just, no.
Yeah, I think so.
How they, did they're coming.
But my own question is, um. That they do reference our twenty twenty four M S one, which I don't believe they would have had. Did they have?
Yes, they.
For this, okay, I, that's right.
Let's see, I'm gonna, they can do it.
Yeah, okay, yes. Uh. We. I'll help you with that, too. And move on to the consent calendar, make a motion to ratify the consent calendar, remain in P one five.
I think Laura should second some.
Awesome. I still, Diana and I just thought people at a meeting are going so real like joke, but I'm like. I said, it tends to have like that, yeah, the order, right?
There you go.
Go moral.
All favors?
Kathleen.
Diana.
Laura. Trishan. Okay. Okay, and then I make a motion to approve, um, they can manifest. One twenty, one twenty four, one twenty five, one twenty six, one twenty seven. One twenty eight and one twenty nine.
Awesome, and. Monaco's on a roll.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the only thing I, I was concerned with is there was a, um, six hour voice. Five seven zero four six eight three, the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and change, but there was no P O's number. Was it listed board?
That doesn't give me any.
Yeah, but the P O number wasn't there, so. Um, there should be, you know, to follow our procedure, so, okay.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Um, so, all in favor?
Kathy nine.
Diana.
Laura.
Trishan.
Um. Um, and then I make a motion to accept the town, we won in advance of May fifteenth, twenty twenty five. I'll second it. Uh, favor?
Kathy nine.
Diana.
Laura.
Trishan.
Good job, Laura. You got it.
All right. Um. Do we have a non-public change?
Nope.
Now, that's not that can sue you, running to a habit, you know, like the ones I've suggested, I can hold it if I have a feeling, yes. You can say that. Say there, okay, but.
No, I don't.
Yeah.
All right, um, well, if you have anything at your show, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Slapboard meeting with me, nineteen at seven oh one, you know.
I'll second that too. I mean, also.
He's an alien on the wall. Get me out of there.
Okay, all favor?
Kathleen.
Diana. Oh, Laura.
We thought you were.
Oh.
No, there was no.
Trishan.
Well, that was a nice quick meeting, with all the documents I was reviewing and being.